Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the first Planning Applications Committee of the new council year. And can I particularly welcome our new councillors, that's councillor Yo, councillor Hornsby Smith and councillor Moore, welcome and welcome back to everybody else, but also a returner councillor Gavin, who's no stranger to this particular meeting, but she's back with us after a little break, so welcome to her too. Thank you. All right, I have to announce the matters to do with the recording and like to inform everyone present that this meeting will be recorded and broadcast live on the internet and will be available for repeat viewing on the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during a webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. The seating in the public gallery will not be filmed. Members of the public are only able to speak if they have registered their interest and intention in accordance with the council's procedure rules. As Chair, I have the discretion to adjourn the meeting in the event that there is disorderly conduct from councillors or members of the public in accordance with standing order 34 and 35. I can also terminate or suspend webcasting of the meeting in accordance with the webcasting protocol. Certainly hope none of that will be necessary. I have to read it out, thank you. So going on to the agenda, just to let people know, I'm going to take this, we've got one item of public speaking on the planning applications to be considered, and that is item 13, which is Delwood Hospital, Leavenridge Road in Southcote. And then because we have someone in attendance who's going to talk to us about the transport implications of the Richfield Avenue application for the new school, I'm going to take item 14 after that and then we'll go back to the order in which they're presented to us. So are the minutes of the last meeting for those of you that were here, are you happy with those? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No. I also have apologies I should have said from councillor Robinson, as that's been submitted to... Did you have those already? Right, okay. Nobody's indicating, so no declarations of interest. We have no questions, which takes us on to page 19, the potential site visits for committee items, and Julie Williams is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening councillors and members of the public. Yes, so there's a list of potential site visits for you on page 21 of your main agenda. The only one of those that officers would recommend that an accompanied site visit is carried out is for the Caversham Park application, that's application reference 200409. We don't as yet know when that will be coming to committee, but we will notify you and arrange that visit in due course, but in advance of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to propose that we visit, when appropriate, the first one, the 205213 Henley Road. I think these are both, this is a major application which will have implications for the whole of the north of the river, so I'd like us to go and see that. I don't know whether I misheard you, did you say the Emma Green one was going to be unaccompanied or accompanied?
The Caversham, sorry, the Caversham Park one will be accompanied.
Yeah, okay.
So would you like to do that one on the same day?
Yes.
That would make sense, yeah.
Yes. Unless it doesn't work out with committees that it's coming to. Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. I've got two, please. I'd like to request a site visit to the Park Ward one at the bottom, 211714. I'm concerned with the impact on the locally listed buildings in the park opposite and the South Park Conservation Area just to the rear, and potentially on neighbouring properties as well. So I'm not sure, but I'd like to take officers' advice whether that should be accompanied or unaccompanied. I think it would be of value to view the site from the rear of the existing building, which is the hotel, which would mean going round the back of that, and possibly from neighbouring properties on College Road, which would be the ones directly affected by the new build. So that was my first one. Shall I plough on to the second one? Or shall I, yeah, okay. The second one is one that's not on this list, but one that's been called into pack by councillor McElroy, which is 220123, and that is nine Eldon Square. If it is, if and when it is to come to pack, I think a site visit, as the location is one of a previous application which was subject to significant objections and was eventually withdrawn back in 20, end of 2016, early 2017, it's in the conservation area, and it was subject to a site visit before, which I think, I remember correctly myself, councillor Gavin both attended, and I think it would be well worth, if it's coming to pack, because it's recommended for approval, it'd be well worth visiting again.
The most appropriate date for all of that, depending on when the applications are likely to be coming to committee? Thank you. We go on then to planning appeals on page 23. Julie, again, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've got nothing to add to the report, although just to say, in respect of 27 Newcastle Road where the appeal was allowed, apologies, there is no report for you in the agenda, but it is referred to later on in your update pack in connection with item number 11 for 2 Howard Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on any of that report or questions? No, in which case can we note that? Thank you very much. And no doubt there'll be more information about some of those coming forward to a future meeting. And then we've got on page 29, applications for prior approval. Julie, again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Nothing to add to this report. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Not seeing anyone, so can we note that report as well? Thank you. And then that takes us on to the report on page 35, the annual performance monitoring report. Again, Julie, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is sort of like the school report, I suppose, for the planning section. I'm pleased to be able to report that for the last year, we have been again able to meet and exceed the set targets by government for performance on determining applications. So for majors, we managed to do 86% in time and the requirement is 60%. For minors, it was 84%. The requirement set is 70%. And for other applications, it was 85%. And again, the target is 70%, so that was a job well done. In terms of the number of decisions issued, that is also up from previous years, back up to perhaps the pre-pandemic years with 762 decisions issued in that time. There is also an item in the agenda talking about the enforcement team. As you know, we've had our problems with our enforcement performance over the last couple of years, but we have been able to employ a new member of staff, so that's helping us to catch up on the backlog. And so we have been able to see that change, and hopefully that's going to continue into into the new year with more cases being investigated and closed. There's one item I wanted to draw your attention to was the income. It does look indeed on the, on the table, on table six, that March was an exceptional year for us, and I was curious whether it was an indication of a surge of application fees coming in, you know, something had happened. But in fact, that's the result of us having four applications with rather large fees coming in in March. Indeed, one of those was Caversham Park, so that was the response to that. The following, for April, we were back down to sort of normal levels, I suppose. So, yeah, my expectations were managed by that. And then there's a short item at the end, item nine in the report, talking about commitments monitoring. Mark Waringham produced that information for this report, and it shows there that, so last year, there was 850 homes completed, so was in excess of the policy requirement, which is 689 dwellings. And it was a big increase when compared to the previous year, which was 408 dwellings completed. There's also to note, there's 2,519 dwellings under construction, which he considers is the highest he can remember over recent years. But to add that most of those new dwellings are in the town centre area. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ennis, you're indicating?
Yeah, I very much welcome the report. And certainly note and welcome the, we should welcome the hard work the planning team have completed in an incredible challenging period with Covid and also vacancies. And that double whammy must have been difficult for you to all to undertake your job. And I think certainly sitting on the planet in the last year, the professionism that's been done by officers, sometimes under pressure wrongly, because you're only reporting what what's there and recommending, we're the decision makers. I think that needs to be noted. I think the concern that I have, or the questions I have is around enforcement, as you probably gather yourself, that there's some challenging figures there. Obviously, I take it 21, 22, that the drop in the closure cases would be down to vacancies and Covid, that's pretty obvious. But are you confident, do you think with the new member of staff, that there will be a period that we could make some headway into into the figures on enforcement?
Yes, indeed. So the figures for 20, 21, 22, that increase to 70 is just for, you know, so far, the new member of staff joined us at the beginning of the year. So we've seen that increase in closures coming through, and it's actually boosted the, their old existing member of staff as well. Obviously, he was under considerable strain. It's given him quite a boosting motivation, I suppose, to actually have somebody else to share with, et cetera. So, yeah, I'm hoping that that will continue. Thank you.
Seeing anybody else, can we thank you for the report? And if I can reiterate councillor Ennis's point, I think we all know just how difficult it's been, not only because of Covid, but you've had considerable staff shortages and so on. So we've kept the show on the road, I think, and very well in difficult circumstances. But maybe we should look to have another report on the enforcement, this is possible, just so we can monitor that it is indeed going in the right direction. Okay, can we note the report? Thank you. And then we go on to item eight, the aptly-named levelling up and regeneration bill. Sorry, I try not to be too cynical about it, but do you want to introduce this? Thank you.
Only very briefly. It's an information report, just to bring it to your attention, that this important bill has just been published and it's out now for the public to get to grips with. And we are doing the same at the moment in the planning section, what does it imply for us, certainly in terms of the local plan and supplementary planning documents. There's some good things and bad things in it, from what we can see. Certainly welcome the, the decision to, or the recommendation that we have 10 years as the enforcement immunity period. At the moment, it's mixed, you know, it's either four years or 10 years, which does lead to some confusion for many. But as I say, we're waiting to see how this pans out as further people comment on it, and also as it goes through the House, how much of it survives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lang, I think you were indicating, and then I've got councillor William.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, this report's come to the committee tonight because it's obviously an impact on planning, and I was, this is going to be a long process, and I'm sure the House of Lords will have rich pickings with it. I will mention the affordable housing element, and with the doing away of the section 106 agreements, and the levies coming in at the end of, when the developments are complete. You know, there's no detail on that yet. This will certainly hit council's finances and such like. I'm going to, I would expand, but probably not tonight. Apart from one more sentence, I will say, it says that the government wishes to maintain the levels of affordable housing. You know, wishes, I mean, what does that mean? You know, it's just ridiculous, and I'm not using very council-like wording to describe it, but it's a dog's dinner of a, of a paper, and I'm sure, I'm sure it won't get very far. Thank you.
Councillor Josh Williams. I don't have to call you that anymore, do I?
Oh, no, just councillor. Thank you very much, Chair. I agree with the, although brief sentiments from my fellow councillor. I was going to say a few words. I think my concern is that, as you read through, there's a lot of things that feel minor, but taken all together, it feels like a power grab, all moved to Westminster and away from Reading. And I guess people in Reading would much rather that this committee, of its directly-elected members, make decisions on its behalf and not Boris in Westminster. I had a few other things to say, but it's probably not the time to go on on a rant. But I do have one little question, and it's almost the same question as councillor Lang, that one of the sentences in the report is, "The negotiation around affordable housing would be removed. Local authorities able to require a certain amount of development delivered as onsite affordable housing." So I just wondered if officers could expand slightly on that. Negotiations removed, we would be able to require affordable housing onsite. Have I understood that?
Yes, because the idea is to include affordable housing as part of the SIL, I suppose. So there's no more sort of room to negotiate on terms of, okay, if you're going to give us more family units, then we could drop the percentage you're providing. It's going to be a set, as SIL is. And in fact, they're recommending changing the SIL calculation to from square foot to the gross development value. So that would sort of tie in with that. As to how we would deal, or how the applicant would deal with the viability issue, I don't know how that would be. That would actually take viability out of the equation, because we don't discuss viability for SIL. So, yeah, so I don't know. I think that's for bigger brains than mine to answer. But it is something that certainly our monitoring officer, our SIL officer and our policy officer are studying to try and work out what the implications are. And SIL is a complicated system anyway, so it's, yeah. If it makes it easier, then that may be welcome, but, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I don't see it's any harm in having a rant personally, and that might be a little bit for the self. But I think we do need to make the points, because this is relevant to local planning, that this grab towards the centre is not just the opposition saying that. Many Conservative members, and I don't want to end off first a poor old councillor because he's kind of on his own there, sitting in there on his own, it's not fair. But many Conservative members have got concerns about some of the aspects of this levelling up, you know, because if you look at previous applications, previous high-profile applications, where there were numerous consultations, numerous residents, in fact, in many of the areas, you know, that, we're talking thousands, in some, in some of the planning applications, that residents wanted to have their say. And the fact is that, you know, local consultation, local scrutiny, local overview will be taken out. And we won't be able to do that or to exercise our right. Councils won't be able to exercise their right to try and keep as much local autonomy as possible, and residents won't be able to hold us to account. Now, sometimes a cynic in you and me would say that that's designed to put the blame on local councillors. And that is potentially right, where we will get the flak when residents cannot have any say or any overview or any scrutiny of their area. Because at the end of the day, it's residents who live in the area, and it's residents that will be affected by planning applications. I think the law in itself is as weak as it has been for a number of years. But this, I think, potentially will make it even worse. And the watering down of local accountability cannot be welcomed, despite many of the positives that might be in there. So I think we do need to make that point to the, to the, to the local residents of Reading, be careful here, because it might sound great, but you'll lose your right to have a say, potentially. So that needs to be made point. And I think when it comes back, we need to be seeing what's in it and making that clear. Thank you.
Councillor Moore.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Ennis there, especially on 7.1. It says the requirement to consult the community and take counter responses is retained, but the detail is going to be largely passed into future regulations, which sounds like it's kicking the can down the road and not giving a great amount of detail, which does worry me about the accountability of the council and the say of residents. So I just kind of want to echo the comments of councillor Ennis there.
Right, not seeing anybody else. Let's hope that when the House of Lords get mangling, some of it does get changed. But we're not holding our breath at the moment. But, yeah, let's see where it gets to, and you'll report back to us when things are clearer. Thank you. Can we note that report then? Thank you. And then we go on to the planning applications to be considered this evening. And as I said at the beginning, we're going to take item 13 first, that's on page 143, because we have public speaking on that. So how this works is for the case officers to introduce it, and then invite the members of the public and indeed the applicant who have asked to speak to do, to do that. And then we'll get on to our main discussion. So Matt Byrne, I think is going to introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is item 13 on page 143 of the Main Agenda Reports Pack, relates to the site of the former Delwood Hospital on Leavenridge Road. The application is for outline planning permission, considering matters of access, appearance, layout and scale for the partial demolition, conversion and extension of the existing building to form a care home, provision of a new site access, car parking and associated works. Landscaping details are the only reserved matter for consideration at a later date. There is an update report for this item on page 13 of the update pack, which amends the officer recommendations such that it is no longer subject to completion of a section 106 legal agreement. The matters to be secured by the legal agreement are instead now recommended to be secured by way of two additional conditions. The reasons for this are set out within the update report. There is also an error in the recommendation box of the update report, which should state to grant outline planning permission and not full planning permission. But, yeah, officers have nothing further to add to that which is set out in the main report or the update. And the recommendation is to grant outline planning permission subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I invite Evelyn? Lost my place on the list. Evelyn, I haven't written your surname down, and I should know. It's Williams, isn't it? Yeah, sorry. Complete blank there for a minute. Would you like to come and introduce yourself, and then we'll time your five minutes?
Good evening. Evelyn Williams, Chair of Reading Conservation Area Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Unusually for us, we're speaking in support of an application, and we are very pleased to do so. The plans presented for approval this evening demonstrate that with a willing developer, heritage buildings can be successfully reused within a larger development, and that Reading's heritage policies, as set out in the new local plan and national planning policy, can protect buildings with important tangible and intangible heritage. We were very pleased to see that the first application was withdrawn, following officers, officer concerns about the loss of this undesignated heritage asset. We believe that recognition of Delwood as an undesignated heritage asset is very important for Reading heritage and Reading residents. We should also not lose sight of the fact that the building sits immediately opposite Prospect Park, which is Grade Two listed. The result is that in this application, Delwood will be retained, and officers and the applicant have been able to work together on the revised plans that are presented for approval this evening. To go back a little to the first application, we objected to that because it would have demolished the building and concluded that any future development should incorporate the existing building because of its heritage significance, visual appearance on the street, and because that would be a more sustainable solution in keeping with Reading's climate change policies. Our researches into Delwood revealed it to be a fascinating building and an important part of Reading's heritage. The first occupier was Greville Ewing Seon, who bought the land in 1894. He was born in Hamilton, Bermuda, and there is a possibility of a connection with Delwood House in Hamilton, hence the name of this house on Leavenridge Road. The house retained its name, and when opened in 1920 by Reading Borough Council, it was known as Delwood Paternity Hospital. Many Reading residents were born there or had their children there, and so it's an important part of the town's cultural heritage and the personal history of those living in Reading today. The revised plans are an improvement on the original designs, as they remove what we considered to be the visually weakest element, which was the gables and roofs of the southern block. Although we otherwise liked the modern styling of the southern wing of the care home in the first plans, which clearly differentiated from the Victorian Delwood, we are very content to support the revised plans. We also welcome condition 28, a plaque to commemorate Nurse Frida Holland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just see whether there's any questions. Anybody got any questions? Ms. Williams? Councillor Hornsby Smith?
I realise that landscaping is a reserved matter, but I would like to see some points of interest, not just screening.
You need to, you need to ask a question of Evelyn. We'll come on to
Oh, okay.
those things later. I don't know whether Evelyn wants to comment on the landscaping, but it's not for her to change it. Okay. Councillor Rowland?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask really quickly. Thank you, Chair. Evelyn, do you have any comments about the materiality of the site and the, the new structure or anything like that you might like to add?
As, as you know, in our comments on the revised plans, we, we weren't convinced that the, the mirroring of Delwood in the new plans worked quite as well as the more modern wing. And we thought there could have been some changes made, so that the arrangement of the windows in the public rooms facing the park, changing them to a larger, more modern format, or varying brick colour, we felt that might be preferable. But, you know, on balance, we are very happy because we've kept Delwood. There is also something else, I'll just continue a bit, that we mentioned as a question, we couldn't see what was happening to the front door of Delwood. And the updated plans do show that that door will be refurbished, so there will be a door where currently there's a kind of blocked off window, half-window kind of thing. So, thank you.
Not seeing anybody else. So thank you very much for coming to talk to us. And if I could invite developers to take the table now, thank you. And it's John Horstman and Anna Chiselska. I apologise for mangling your name. If you'd like to, if you'd like to switch on the microphone and introduce yourselves, that would be helpful. And then we'll start the five minutes.
Thank you. Anna Chiselska, want to play a state.
And John Horstman.
Have you got your, is your mic on? Your, yes, it is. Yes, maybe. Your, yes, maybe it might need moving a bit nearer. Thank you. Right, when you're ready, five minutes is over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councillors. Just like to take a moment to thank your officers in working tirelessly with us to bring forward the proposal before you. All consultees have also contributed significantly. The scheme has gone through several iterations, as you've heard, and has finally reached a solution which retains Delwood, which we are more than delighted to do. Hopefully you will welcome this much needed service for the residents of Reading and of course that it offers new employment opportunities. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the committee? Councillor Gavin?
Thank you. Could you just explain to us or tell us a little bit more about in your, quoted in your report is that you talk about care for being at all dependency levels. So I was unclear what you meant by that, whether these were people who were living independently through to people who needed 24 hour care or at what level? Because it says, it says vulnerable people of all dependency levels. So I was just unclear where that, if you like, breakpoint was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a 24 hour nursed service, so it is full nursing care right the way through. That would be looking after people who have reached a stage where they need that. It is more than residential and therefore typically a number of residents will have dementia and need looking after. Others may have physical limitations. Some people might have both, but some of the residents would undoubtedly be bed bound, undoubtedly. But the makeup of care homes has changed enormously over the past 30, 40 years and what used to be an average stay of potentially seven years in a care home is way down to closer to a matter of months. So it's that much more hands-on care provision.
Councillor Ennis, I think you were indicating.
I want to ask questions about park traffic. I suppose I could ask them here. I mean, you've seen a number of residents, it's my ward, South God's Country as I call it, have made concerns about the traffic, the parking and the traffic and these 33 spaces. What's your view on, on that? What's your view? What would you, what would you like to say to reassure for us to take back to the residents that there won't be major issues of parking on Leavenood Road, which has got, you know, it's nothing to do with you of course, but it has issues anyway. I don't know what your view on that is. How can you reassure the residents?
Firstly, we have the support of our submitted document around traffic movements and parking through your highways officer. And there is, I think, an expectation and sometimes a vision of what, what goes on at a care home, particularly with lots of visitors. And unfortunately, in truth, that doesn't happen so much. Visitors tend to come at the weekend, but probably not as often as, as people might think. There are not large vehicles bringing supplies, food, other materials and so on. It's fairly low key and I think you'll find that as far as staff are concerned, a number will, through the expectations of the travel plan, be coming by public transport. So I, it is generally as a use, be it in Reading or anywhere else, a low traffic generator and a fairly, none of the residents drive for instance, I mean, that's just not possible. So you're looking at a very low number of cars.
I'm not seeing anybody else indicating, so thank you very much for your time and we'll move.
There was a question about landscaping, we could probably.
Oh, yes. Sandra, do you want to?
Shall I do it now? Right, first intervention in council, brilliant. Okay. No, I'm just concerned, my mum's in a, in a dementia care home and I know that she really fully appreciates little floral displays. What you've got on the indicative plans, and I realise this is a reserved matter, so it will come back later. So it's really just to sort of, you know, say I would appreciate it if you took it on board, I'm sure you will. There's a lot of screening there from, from the road, which is, which is fine, but there's, there's no indication of, of any sort of displays or anything in the, in the other green areas. And I, I think that's important, given that most of the green area is in the front of the property or the side of the property. So it's going to be important, I think, when, when the landscaping does come back, to bear in mind those little bits of interest, especially for your, for your, for your clients who are going to be wheeled round and sort of have a look at this flower, have a look at that flower.
Generally, there will be raised beds and the senses generally through smell, colour, through sight and the like are concentrated on in a detailed scheme. Thank you.
Okay, certainly not seeing anybody else now, so thank you very much for your time and we'll move on to the main discussion now. Councillor Ennis, as Ward councillor.
Yeah, I'm going to make a few points. I certainly support this application. I welcome it as, as maybe declaring interest in some ways, but not directly of course, as lead councillor for adult social care, certainly welcome whilst, welcome this type of service, which is, as you said, needed. You know, whilst the objectives of Reading Borough is to, is to ensure that residents are, you know, are able to stay in their homes and receive decent services and the best services available, there will be a need at some point for this. And it is a beautiful building, it looks great now. I mean, I know it well, I walk by it any day, every day, it looks well. I'm really pleased about the Delwood situation, I think my sister was born in Delwood. So that's, I think that's right to, to mark that. And it does, it does look, it does look good. The concerns I have are around the parking, but you've made them points. I think the way it can be dealt with, if there are any issues, if there do issues arise, that we'll take it through a traffic management situation, but I certainly support the application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gavin. Were you indicating? I thought you indicated, apologies. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I think it's, I genuinely think it's great to see a heritage asset brought back to a useful life. I think the overall design is a victory for officers who've worked hard with the applicant to get to this stage. And when we see the revised scheme next to the original one, it's so clearly an improved section 2.8, I think, for anyone looking at the report, it's so clearly an improved scheme, I think that's great. It no longer dominates, but I think it sympathetically adds to the street scene there, so I think that's fantastic. Like the CAC and like councillor Ennis, I'm happy to support this. I've got just two quick questions, just to confirm, the reserved landscape matters, are they coming back to pack or are they delegated to officers? I just wanted to check. I think they're probably coming back to pack and it sounds as though we would like that to be the case. The second thing is, the report notes that a condition be attached to secure details of decentralised energy provision, that's how the building will be heated, whether it's air source, heat pumps, avoiding gas boilers, that kind of stuff, but we don't have those details yet. I, I think that's very important and given how important those decisions are to Reading's net zero future, could we see that condition brought back to pack alongside the landscaping as well, is my question. Thank you, Chair.
Was there an intention to bring it back anyway or do you wish us to?
I suppose the choice is yours really. We don't always bring reserved matters back to committee, but if, if members would like both the landscaping and the, the decentralised energy or the energy condition to come back to committee to be approved, then that's, we're happy to oblige.
I realise that's an overhead for officers, Chair, but I would like those too if, if the rest of the committee are also minded.
Well, it won't do any harm to see the, the detail, but I don't want to delay the getting on with the project is the other matter, but maybe we could have a compromise on the details of the landscaping and the, and the heating and so on could come, could be circulated to, sorry, it's a flag. Could be circulated to committee members and if there are concerns, we would then bring it back. Would that be a helpful compromise? Yep, okay, thank you. And I've now got councillor Rowland indicating.
Right, and I think I might just, just pile on to that concern just a little bit and I'll, I'll come to that point in a minute. I, I do really want to echo councillor Williams applauding of the fact that we have actually saved a non-designated heritage asset. And if any of you cared to go through the planning documents and notice the, the extensive work that the developer's done, there's four or five pages in here, that have taken it all through the development and everything. So I really have to applaud the developer on this, on, on that for actually working with and listening with a community who, who does have a non-designated heritage asset here, that, that means so much to so many residents in Reading. The one thing that councillor Williams didn't pick on that I'm kind of surprised though is, and I often say this, you know, the greenest building is the one that's already standing. And I think we need to applaud again that reuse to here because that's, that's a really, really important point. The, the final iteration of the, of the design does have though, something that one would call mirroring. So basically we've now got Delwood original here and then we've got something that looks quite similar to it over here. And it's important, I think, to be able to look at materials in terms of making that differentiation so that you don't actually have one that's overpowering the other and so that the full appreciation of actually what is our original structure can be amplified. So I would add on that the landscaping and the BRIAM conditions might also be some kind of explanation or choice about materials that we could simply pass around. Sometimes I would personally sit down there and say perhaps those things are shared with the, the local councillors or whatever too, but if, I'm happy with however we, we would want to do that. But it's important that we get some kind of differentiation there so we haven't lost the original building just by the fact of a very close mirroring activity. Whoops, sorry, wrong page there, last page, yeah. So I'd just like to add that, but thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Carnell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll, I'll not take up too much of the committee's time. A lot of the points I was going to make have been made. I agree with councillor Rowland and Williams that it's great to see heritage asset being brought back into useful use and I share councillor Ennis's concerns about traffic movements, but been reassured by the developers. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I do applaud was the condition 28 for the, the plaque to commemorate Nurse Frida Holland, who should well be remembered in Reading's history. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else. Is there anything that officers feel they need to come back on? No? Okay, in which case I will move to a vote, but can I just say as someone who was born there and also gave birth there, I've taken great delight in telling my son that the bit he was born in is being knocked down, but the bit I was born in is being kept. So it's, yes, got a special place and I agree about the plaque. In fact, the gentleman who now lives in London, whose wife was born there, and he's been emailing me, well councillor Page and I for months, asking that we do find a way to commemorate the heroic actions of that awful tragedy, it's 1954 I believe, yeah. So yeah, very pleased to see that as well. Can I see all those in favour of agreeing this recommendation? I think that's unanimous, thank you very much. Takes us then, as I said, on to the last application on the, on the list, but not the last this evening, which is the, the new school in Richfield Avenue, which is our item 14 on page 173. Thank you. And I think Julie, you're going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. So this application is for the demolition of the existing driving range structures and the development of a new eight form entry school for the 11 to 16 year olds, including a new special education needs and disability unit and also a 300 place six form facility, also the associated highways and landscaping works. The school will be operated on behalf of the local educational authority by the Maiden Early Trust, who also operate a number of schools in our area. The proposal explains that it's proposed to meet the additional secondary school places requirement in the area and that's been identified in a recent report to our school places in planning, the Bright Futures for Children committees. And they've also identified that there is a need for additional send facilities in the borough too. So the, the proposed secondary school will operate, the suggested name for it will be the River Academy with its reference to its riverside location and it will accommodate when fully completed and occupied 1,200 pupils. The school area is about 11,333 square metres in Glosick area and in addition to the teaching areas, there's also sports facilities lying to the north of the building, between the building and the Thames side prom. There's also going to be additional parking for the, the school staff, the proposing or anticipating a need of 156 full-time equivalent members of staff and with 82 car parking spaces, including those for accessible needs and also electric charging points provided to. The proposal is to include 120 cycle parking spaces on site. The access will come from Richfield Avenue, so more or less from the entrance to the Cow Lane, lane that people may know or walk down to get to the Thames at the moment. In terms of the appearance of the building, there are pictures in your agenda, but the idea is that the buildings will be clad in a light brick slip system at ground floor with the upper floors treated with cladding panels in deep grey. And then accentuation panels will be used in, in colours to emphasise the key areas of the school, sort of the student entrance etc. So the, the rest of the report goes through the, the various issues that have been raised regarding the school in terms of its, the landscaping, the contamination issues, we've had comments back from the environment agency regarding that, with suggested conditions for the development if it does get approved. There's also a section in there regarding, a very lengthy section regarding the transport implications of the development and we have a colleague here who can answer questions on that if needed. There's also a section on the energy criteria of the building, which is appreciated, is the anticipation is to be very good with latest assessments, assuming that they could actually meet 60% on the BRIAM scale, which the, the scale for excellent is 70%, so a recommended condition. And if you can turn to your update pack now, in, in the update pack, I've amended the terms, heads of terms for the section 106 agreement to reflect that in the main agenda, we're talking about a sum of money being contributed to the council to provide these works, but the, the draft section 106 agreement has in it for those works to be carried out by the developer and those are set out for you in the update pack, the extent of those works. The update pack also talks a bit further about the cycle parking. To just clarify, there was a phrase in the report that suggested that the cycle parking didn't comply with our policy. The policy has two elements to it, so in terms of the cycle parking provision, the numbers, it does comply. Where it fell down on the application stage was the access to it and that is addressed by the section 106 requirements for improvements being made. at the footways on Richfield Avenue. I can't remember if there was anything. I've got that fly now around me. So, yeah, so with with that, I suppose our conclusion on the application is that obviously there's a balance to be set here because the site is in a major landscape area where we would normally discourage development taking place. But that is outweighed, we believe, by the the nature of the development itself in terms of it being a school that has been identified as being required in this area. And also, it does enable this site, which has been contaminated since the 1970s with landfill, it gives an opportunity to do that. It also, the school does have has indicated that they would welcome community use of part of the school. So that would also be a synergy with the adjacent Rivermead Leisure Centre. And there's also been discussions and agreements being made with Festival Republic in terms of how will the school be able to still enable the Reading Festival to continue, which luckily is outside a school term as well. So, yeah, I think when you balance all up all the benefits of the school building, acknowledging some of the defects, that the conclusion is that the application should be granted, subject to the Section 106 agreement being secured, and also subject to quite a number of planning conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor. Yeah, sorry, I'm still remembering the new name.
That's okay.
It's Moore, isn't it?
Yes, that's right. Thank you very much, Chair. I'm broadly supportive of this. I think having another school is well needed in Reading, especially in this area of town. I am a do agree with the report, past report, which say they are disappointed with the the heating being heated by gas boilers. I realise the time constraints, though, on an ambitious target to open it by next September, so I do understand that. And I'm still a little bit concerned about the cycle routes from north of the river not joining up around the Caversham Bridge area, which is quite a dangerous roundabout. But I know I did ask those before in the management panel, and those have been addressed, but I just want to raise those concerns, but I will be voting for.
Thank you. Three people indicating now. Councillor Hornsby-Smith?
Yes, I wanted to say I I agree with councillor Moore that there is a need for the schools, quite clearly something that we we need to get approved. But I would like to see as part of the conditions, quite a robust discussion in respect of conditions 24, 28, and 29, basically bicycle parking and the travel plan and travel plan reviews. I was concerned, looking at Annex Two, page page 231, about the the Berisford Road, Portman Road, Cow Lane AM peak periods. So we have ratios of flow to capacity, the RFC. Now, in my training, I understood that the actual effective ratio of flow to capacity is not 100%. It is 85%, because you cannot expect people driving cars to behave in an ideal modelled way. People stall their cars, people cross the road in front of you, etc., etc. So the effective level of when you reach capacity is not 100%. It's 85% in my training, in my opinion, and others. So we start off with 2021. We start off with the the base year, and we've got a mixture in the morning peak of Bs to Ds, and as it's as it's referred to, various breakdowns of of flow. When we get to the base 2028 figure plus development, we get four Fs, which means it's stacking up at four periods of F, and lots of Vs and etc., etc. So it's considerably worse. So there's quite an impact on this. Now, I think we all accept that, you know, there is a trade-off here. We need a school. This is an available piece of piece of land, and it is going to cause traffic problems. However, I'm concerned that simply providing 120 cycling spaces is inadequate, particularly as there is no bus service from the west at the moment. The the only service that arrives is arrives at Rivermead, and that's once an hour at the moment. So cycling and walking are the main alternative options. I'm delighted that there's going to be £200,000 to set aside to put into broadening the cycle path. But it seems, I think one of the other councillors will will mention this, £200,000 to accommodate 120 cycles seems a bit of a mismatch to me. So I would all the time requesting at this stage is that when we get into the detail of discussing and approving these vehicle, the the bicycle parking provided, the travel plan provided and approved, and the travel plan review, that those are taken into account. And I would hope, and I know this is not necessarily a planning issue, I would hope that there are discussions with the local authority in respect of potential improvements of bus services to cover a bus stop at at the new school. I know that's that's not necessarily something that we can condition, but I would like to see a robust discussion of those. And I'd appreciate any comments from the officer.
Thank you. Councillor Gavin, I think you were next, and then councillor Williams and councillor Page.
Thank you, Chair. As the officer indicated, this is a real balancing act, isn't it, with the absolute demand for more schooling absolutely necessary for our town, and the payoff against building on a floodplain, although it seems to me that that has been ameliorated by the actions that have been taken. So those issues aside, and using green land and so on, I absolutely support this application. The small point I was going to make was that I think the 200k being spent on an improved cycle route seems to be a disproportionate amount of money to be spent on 120 pupils cycling. So I would like to see the the number of cycle places provided probably increase to something like 500, and to see that an absolutely with improved cycling routes and safe cycling routes, we can encourage pupils to use their bicycles in a very active way, not not in a passive way, but actively encourage cycling by by improving the the storage of bicycles, and therefore take more cars off the roads and ameliorate the 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 issues with increased traffic, which I think we'll have to accept there will be increased traffic. You can't build something and then not be increased traffic. It's a case of balance again. And on balance, I support this application with the proviso that we can be a bit more ambitious about how pupils get there.
Thank you. Josh Williams next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'm gonna agree firmly with the councillors who've spoken already, and I'm at risk of repeating a little bit, but this is an important application. I'd like to thank officers for helping me work through some of the details, including the cycle parking provision, which, as councillor Gavin says, seems woefully inadequate for the size of the school. It's not just pupils, but I would be hoping the staff would be on their pushbikes, too. But it is policy compliant, as they say, and I guess that policy could well be beefed up in future local plans, but for the time being. And I was grateful to hear that there is room and potential plans for more cycle parking if they can persuade their cohort of children and staff to get on their bike. And the school's obviously needed. The loss of the space seems justified in this case. The the fact that the sports facilities and the school facilities could be of community use in the future is a good thing. It's incredibly disappointing to see no green roof, no no particular nod to the fact that that we exist within a climate emergency, no particular nod to educating our children that that's the case. It doesn't even particularly feel like a building that's been designed to sit next to the sort of major river in our country, never mind Reading. It doesn't it doesn't feel that the design has been aesthetically chosen to respond to its setting particularly. And the report notes that good design is a key aspect of sustainable development. But I don't know, I look at the pictures and I see a fairly boxy, unattractive design in front of us, which the report repeatedly labels functional. So I think, as councillor Gavin said, this is a balance between the needs of those children to be educated and the time in which this has to go up, I guess. I agree with Kadra and the Caversham Globe, this is probably a missed opportunity. I worry we're going to look at this building in 10, 20 years' time and think, oh, dear, what was that? But children do need an educational, I've got the fly, thanks, guys. And children do need an educational facility. And as as councillor Moore said, the the developer needs to work very hard to move away from gas boilers for heating. Burning fossil fuels that literally cost the earth is not the solution. So there's a number, a considerable number of things to work on, Chair, but I think, like others, I'll be minded to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page, you're next, I think.
Chair, before I speak, could we have an officer comment about the points that councillor Hornsby-Smith and one or two others have raised around, would help me, what?
Yeah, would you like to?
If I just go first, and then I'll invite Chris Saunders at the end of the the desk there to help out on the more technical question that was raised about the numbers and the traffic flows. Just just to confirm, the Section 106 obligations have been changed. It's no longer a contribution of £200,000. It's actually it's actually to do carry out the works as specified in the update report. So just to make that clear. So it's it's actually a number of works. And it's not just in terms of widening the cycleway. Also, that those works would widen the the footpath itself, in a sense. So it would actually should make it easier for pedestrians and cyclists to use that route. So that's the intention of of that. But if I hand over now to Chris to do with the the other more technical questions, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. There was a vast lot to go through there, so I'll take it in turns. Regarding councillor Hornsby-Smith's comments about ratio to flow, yes, you are correct. 0.85 is where flow starts to break down. One is at one is at capacity. What we have done, working with the applicant, is one of the reasons why the school is going to open at 9:30, have 9:30 to 3:30, which is slightly later than the other schools in Reading, is to miss the main peak of nine, sort of eight o'clock to nine o'clock, because modeling then it would have much greater impact on the on the network. Regarding the cycleway, the existing footpaths down Richfield Avenue are designated a footway cycleways, but they're only between 1.8 and 2 metres wide, and they're a shared provision. What we're suggesting here is widening them to three metres, which is the minimum width the DFT now recommends for shared footway cycleway. So it's just not for cyclists, it's to try and make sure there's sufficient room for pedestrians and cyclists walking down the road. And there'll be both sides of the road that will be widened. With regard to cycle parking, the cycle parking provision is in accordance with the Parking Standards Submensory Planning Document produced by Reading. It's a convoluted calculation. I'll do it quickly. Basically, it's 10% for the first 500 occupied staff and pupils, which is 50, 7% between 500 and 1,000, which is 35, and 5% over 1,000, which is 32. So that's the minimum minimum provision, which your policy requires is 117. So 120 is provided, so it's more than the minimal provision. I believe the the applicant is here. That's not stopping them to put additional cycle parking in in place. But what's provided is in accordance with the requirements of the SPD. The SPD, I believe, was 2011. So, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so things have changed since then. I agree with that, but we have to stay stay with that. I think that's most of the points summarized as quick as I can.
Councillor Page.
Thank you, Chair. Can I welcome Chris Saunders back to the chamber, not in his previous capacity, and thank him for those comments about the cycling provision. It's good that the amended recommendations are coming forward, and he's rightly set out the fact that the DFT has recently improved its own standards. Indeed, the funding that we're receiving from the DFT requires segregated cycleways. And it's interesting that the DFT doesn't appear to have caught up with the DFT in imposing those standards on itself. And the fact that we now have, and I'm glad you've confirmed and reminded us, and indeed you may well have been responsible for that, SPD, that our cycling SPD is now well bang out of date. And that doesn't mean that we necessarily should should sit, let's get it right, should sit here and just accept that. And I think one of the points that tonight clearly highlights is that that policy needs updating. And here we have a proposal accepted by the applicants about the need for improvements to the footway and cycleway. We have an accepted and generally recognised need to promote more cycling, particularly amongst the cohort of people that will be predominating on this site, namely teenagers. And I would suggest that a target figure of 500 is a very minimum that should be looked at for this site. And it's a bit paradoxical that we've got hundreds of thousands being spent on promoting access by cycle, and then absolutely minimal provision on site. And the area of land that's allocated here could easily accommodate one of the double or treble deck versions of cycle storage. We have a good example on the north side of the station. By my reckoning, what's here, shown on the plan, could easily accommodate 500 on that existing site. So I'm afraid I I agree with, not I'm afraid, I agree with my colleagues that there should be a much greater provision for cycling on the site. And on the wider access point of view, colleagues have rightly highlighted the need for improved public transport. Now, we can't require this development to fund improved public transport for the whole area. But I think the issue of a bus stop and how one might accommodate bus access near to or into the site is something that I don't think has been properly considered. And I look at the the plans, and whether there is a scope for somewhere as part of the the roadworks that are being done for a bus stop either on Richfield Avenue or lay-by ideally, I think is something that we should ask to be examined. The council has recently received provisional funding from the DFT, which we have welcomed. It's not as much as we originally bid for, but it's still a reasonably large amount, in which we are committed to improving bus services along Richfield Avenue and Portman Road to and from the west of the town. And that was always a part of our aspirations in promoting the the redesign and the new bridges along Cow Lane. And that's always been a commitment of the council. We're now in a position with that funding to take that forward. So there will be improved bus services along that road. They will cover the weekend and Sundays. Quite what the frequency will be has still to be worked out. But that service from the west of the town, a first in Reading's history, will be delivered, we hope, from October of this year, and then further enhanced in the early part of next year. So some form of bus stop in that area needs to be accommodated. Now, I know the government funding allocation only came a few weeks ago, and that obviously post-dates a lot of discussions. But that is something that we do need to recognise. So, Chair, I would also remind colleagues, and particularly new colleagues, that originally this site was the preferred site for a traveller and transit camp. And that was going to be the use of this land until the requirement that we all accepted for a new secondary school. This was then identified as about the only site in the borough that will would fulfil the educational needs and also reasonably central. And so it's a it's a site with some history. I share some of the reservations that councillor Williams and others have expressed. The DFT- The DFE is well behind in terms of recognizing the climate crisis. Indeed, the briefing that we have received does refer to elements of sustainable design, but you know, it's lagging well behind, I think we can say. But nonetheless, the need for the school is well established, and I would support the grant of consent, but I would look to Julie Williams to advise us on how we strengthen the provision of cycle parking and also get the issue addressed about public transport serving the site in terms of a bus stop. I don't know whether Chris Saunders has got anything further to say on that, or you, but I do think we as a committee will want to say something on both those points.
Shall I jump in first, Chris, and then you can, yeah. So I would have thought, we have a recommended condition regarding the travel plan, which requires the school to, obviously, it's difficult for them to anticipate how many people cycle, et cetera, until the school is starting to be occupied. And so that could actually include a requirement, you know, we talk about changing the modal split in the standard conditions, so that obviously we need to emphasize that that would include cycle parking, cycling provision. It's not just the parking, you also need storage facilities and changing facilities as well to go with that. But I don't, you know, from what I see of pupils going to school near me, they seem to tend to be on scooters rather than bicycles, so it may well be that there will be, you know, maybe we need a different approach to meet those requirements as well in the future. But I think that's, I think we can deal with that within the
Hold on a minute.
Within the travel plan conditions, so that would be my suggestion as to a way to deal with that. Thank you.
Mr. You.
Yeah, I think Julie's covered the cycle park. We go on the bus stop, there's two ways you can have a lay-by, but I don't know the sufficient width to get a lay-by under foot cycleway improvements in. However, you can put the bus stop marking down on the carriageway, which vents any vehicles parked apart from a bus. As we recommend traffic regulation order to change the markings, the school keep clear markings, that could be included with the traffic regulation order to provide bus stop markings on the side of the road.
Maybe just to jump in there, because obviously we also have the leisure centre just further down the road, and obviously it'd be ideal if the bus stop could serve both facilities. So maybe we need to sort of widen the search as to the best location for the school and the leisure centre. Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of what we agree tonight, assuming we do agree, what would it be helpful to add in, so this isn't something we just muttered about tonight and then didn't do anything about, because I think it's got to be something that we genuinely take forward rather than...
So I would suggest that if members are minded to approve, that you also ask that I strengthen the travel plan conditions to require that the school explores how to improve the facilities for cycle use at the school for staff and pupils. And, what else? Oh, for the BRIAM one, we've already touched on that one in terms of the energy to try to achieve a minimum of 60% in terms of the equivalent of the BRIAM score, and to look for further ways of how that score can be improved, because this is what we've been told, that things should become better once the school's established. The pressure is on actually getting the school built now, and the approach that the school has taken, or the developers have taken, is to try and make sure that the building itself is energy efficient in terms of its, which does make sense. But hopefully, as time goes on, we will be able to build in improvements as to how they manage their energy consumption and how the energy is actually provided to the school as well, whether it be through, you know, photovoltaics or other means in the future.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've still got two other people indicating to speak. Do you want to come back on?
That was on the proposed amendment, the traffic regulation order point that Chris Saunders raised, I think is a valid one, and that needs to include the reviewing bus parking or a bus stop. And secondly, the bullet point, the second bullet point on page 173 refers to restrictions along the Caversham Road frontage of the site. Well, I'm intrigued as to how Caversham Road fronts the site.
That's covered in the update report, it's been changed to Richfield Avenue.
Has it? All right, good, well. All right, at the top, I see, yeah, good. Glad you spotted that.
Waiting patiently, I've had to councillor Carnell and councillor Rowland, so councillor Carnell.
Thank you, Chair. Like I gather other members of this committee, I welcome the proposal to build a new secondary school in Reading. I think we're all aware, the better the facilities, the better the results. Relation to, I think it was councillor Williams' comments about the gas boiler, there is provision to connect him with a future district heating network, should one appear. So there is provision there to alter the method of heating. And I would imagine those connections could be used for alternate sources as well. I will just mention to members that I have a school in my ward, which came before this committee in the not-too-distant past, where there was some controversy. It has a mugger, there were regular complaints of both noise and light pollution. So I am pleased that here it's tucked away from any residential areas, so there shouldn't be any complaints. And as I say, I will be supporting this proposal.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. At this point, most of my points have been made, so I will try to be brief here. I think that in summation, obviously, we're going to be minded to approve this, obviously, and eagerly await the new school. I do find it to be exactly what councillor Williams put and others put, the fact that this is really, when I was looking at it again last night, a missed opportunity. We're going to be 10 or 15 years down the road, exactly like you said, going, what did we do? Because of the fact that we are very much in the middle of a climate emergency, and I just do not see the mitigating factors or the thought that was put forward. I mean, it rankles my good nerve that we've got something called the River Academy, and there is no access for these children to the river. I mean, I understand there's safety issues there, but there's just, it's just a cold lack of response to what is, you know, a local green space that we are giving up for that. The hope and dream of any kind of improved future heating, air source heat pumps or PV panels on top of the roof, to me seem just a pipe dream that I'm afraid will never be realized, because we're working on a budget here. The River Academy energy statement that I went and dug out also said that the reason why we are, they have gone for fabric first is because it's a budgetary constraint. They've gone to actually hermetically seal a building up, so they will have even less connection with nature and their surroundings, because the building will be so airtight that we're not going to need to be as worried about making the, those improvements in the future, which can be made. I sit down there and I'm, I do have a number of questions. Why have we not seized the opportunity at the southern tip, was something that I believe Globe or Cadra brought up, to use that for more trees? To use the site a little better for more than just simply perfunctory planting of trees? And there's no creativity down there with the southern tip of the site? Could that be where we've got our more bicycles? Could that be an opportunity to plant an orchard for children or something? It just really seems to be a missed opportunity. And finally, if we're not putting PV panels on top of the roof, why didn't we do a green roof? I mean, it just begs for an answer, that I understand the developers here, but we unfortunately didn't have them speak. So I'm left with the, you know, a lot of issues that we've raised here, and the knowledge that we are going to have a school, and I know that this town will make that school work, I have no doubt. But I do feel like it's a bit of a missed opportunity. And once again, I also feel like we're just being rushed towards another school without being able to really sit down there and shape it into a true vision of what we want for the future. So, sorry, rant over.
Councillor Ling.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just add a final comment. Some of the points that councillor Rowland raised, I actually see as a positive, you know, and fabric first, I haven't really got a problem with that. I'll come back to the school opening hours, 9.30 to 3.30. I'm a bit uncomfortable with sort of councillors and planners telling schools when, you know, when they should open and close. Schools are pretty flexible with their hours, I should think. And sometimes the school is a focal point, very much the centre of the local area, and sometimes we have to adapt to it, you know, because it's, nothing comes before our children's education. So that would be the point that I would make. And I hope that it's not attached to a condition and we are a little bit more flexible. Because obviously in the traffic report, there were, we were going to reach capacity, so there's further improvements that we can make that way.
Yeah, okay, if I, just to comment, I did agree with you in that, I didn't think it was, I didn't think it would be an enforceable condition to say that the school should only operate between certain hours, knowing how schools tend to operate, you know. Would we take action against a child who was going for its breakfast club or an early class of judo, whatever it might be, or late detention even, or early detention if they do that? Still, talk about my school days. But what I have done, because I know it was a concern from Chris Saunders in terms of how they were justifying the traffic impact in terms of the school, was I've prepared a set of draft conditions in readiness for this, and just to see what it would look like. And so I'm suggesting that we have an informative that encourages the school to explore its opening hours and et cetera, et cetera. So sort of encourage it, because this wasn't an idea from us, it's actually the school was proposing this as their operating time. So I don't think we could say, you can't, and we would, you know, reward them for being imaginative in that sense, in terms of, you know, changing their operating times, but I don't think it would be appropriate to enforce it through condition.
Yeah, hence why I said that we could alleviate traffic problems by looking at other things.
So I think it might be just important to, the traffic modeling doesn't assume that everyone comes for 9.30. It assumes that staff become earlier, and it also assumes a proportion will be at clubs or events preschool, and it assumes that the proportion will stay behind for after-school clubs as well. So the actual profile's from 8.30 through to about 5:00. But what we're saying is, on only one day, the majority of the pupils will be going between, that's be the school day, but the modeling has assumed that the some will be going earlier and the percentages will stay later for after-school.
Well, I'm not seeing anybody else indicating, and I think we've had a long discussion about this, but it's important, this is a very significant development in our town, and we need to think about these issues. And I'm sure that hopefully the developers have been listening as well, and over time, I understand that not all the pupils will be starting to, it won't be at capacity to start with, it will be over a period of time that they gradually fill up from, you know, the first years to go in. But nevertheless, hopefully, some of the things that have been said tonight will be reflected on, and over time, some of them can be improved upon, particularly issues around cycling and access and so on. And maybe even, you know, they might even have been listening about climate change and the rest of it, because it's, you're right, it does need to be more reflective. But maybe the pupils themselves will be demanding it, there's been young people elsewhere that have been demanding improvements. So are we the suggestions for adding in those issues, so that we do come back to them, are people happy to agree with this recommendation? Thank you very much. Thank you to Chris for coming tonight. We need to go to the beginning, so to speak, and take the first item, which is Minster Street on page 51. And it's David Brett introducing this.
Thank you, Chair. Planning permission and listed building consent is sought for the upgrade of a rooftop telecommunications base station shared between multiple telecoms providers at 41 Minster Street, with the installation of a replacement stub tower, six new antennas, eight cabinets and associated works, ancillary works rather. These applications are on the committee agenda due to the council's scheme of delegation that requires all applications for new or replacement telecommunications development to be determined by the planning applications committee. The notable benefit of the proposal includes providing improved network coverage for the various uses within the town centre, nearby residence and emergency services network. The increase in height and the width of the proposed stub tower and antennas from the existing is acknowledged. However, given the fact that the building is surrounded by other modern buildings and the location of the base station is to the centre of the building and set back from Minster Street, it is considered to be less than substantial harm of the development to the heritage asset. Sorry, in this case, of the telephone exchange along Minster Street, the officer recommendation is therefore to grant planning permission and listed building consent, subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Councillor Rowland.
Just to comment, I think that this is perfectly acceptable as a ward councillor, and also just leaning on the knowledge in section 4.4, that our conservation urban design officers raise no objections, and that also that he believes that the visual impact of the proposed development is less harm than what we've got there now, and I would happen to agree with that. So I'm happy to go with the recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else. Can I say all those in favour of agreeing this recommendation? That's unanimous, thank you very much. And we go on to item 10, which is on page 63, which is going to be introduced by Connie Davis, and it's the Two Howard Street decision that's, sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. It's 1A Eaton Place, which Connie Davis is going to introduce. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for the demolition of a single-storey office building and construction of a two-storey building comprising of two one-bedroom flats. The site is located on the edge of the Russell Street, Castle Hill and Oxford Road Conservation Area. The proposal is considered to represent a positive addition to the conservation area, particularly given the low-quality design of the existing building, which you can see on screen. Whilst officers note there are some shortcomings of the scheme, as identified in the report, on balance, these are considered to be outweighed, coupled with the constraints posed given the town centre location. The proposal is therefore recommended for approval, subject to conditions and a section 106 agreement to secure affordable housing and a financial contribution towards off-site tree planting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page.
Chair, can I say to the committee that I disagree with the recommendation here? The town centre is acknowledged as an area where standards can be more flexibly applied, particularly with conversions. The extent to which new build should be compromised in terms of size and quality is, I think, what we need to focus on. This is a very small constrained site. The photo there is actually quite a flattering photo. Normally, the building is surrounded with fly-tipping rubbish and graffiti, but it's been tidied up for this photo. but it's been tidied up for this photo. I'm not suggesting that the photographer tidied it up, but fortuitously, they chose a good day. But it is a very difficult site. And the first point I would make is that the issue of the size of the accommodation is reflected and commented on in paragraph 6.22 on page 71 and 6.23. It is clear, it says on the top of page 72, the proposed ground-floor flat would fall short of the national space standards by seven square metres. That's over 20% of the reduction, 37 being the minimum, 30 proposed here. Now, flexibility again is allowed around our town centre accommodation. I would suggest this is really pushing it and creating a substandard ground-floor flat. I would also draw colleagues' attention to the fact, and I'm surprised that this didn't feature in the report, that the ground-floor bedroom accommodation is located under first-floor living hallway and bathroom. And if you look on page 78, you will see that the first-floor accommodation on the top of the plan sits over, and as I say, the hallway, bathroom and kitchen sit over the ground-floor bedroom. And that is very much in contravention of our stacking policies. And indeed, in respect of the following item, Two Howard Street, we refused an application because it did precisely that as well. And the applicant has amended it, but that's for the next item, Chair. So I regard this issue of the stacking as being substandard. Again, this is a new building. We're not talking about a conversion. We're talking about a deliberate downgrading of the quality of the ground-floor flat. And heavens above, trying to sleep under a kitchen, bath and hallway is going to be an interesting experience. Then there's the lack of amenity. Now, again, this is a constrained site. And our local plan acknowledges that there will be lower amenity standards in the town centre. But there is no amenity provided here, except for a couple of glorified window boxes shown on page 78, which would be barely enough for the cat to do its business, let alone any human benefit from it. Which is why there's a suggestion for an off-site and commuted... An off-site contribution towards tree planting. Well, really, that will really be well-appreciated by the occupants of these flats. If we were to give permission, we can tell them, well, we planted a few trees on your behalf. So, Chair, the lack of any amenity space, not just the reduced amenity space, the location of this site does not lend itself readily to residential, I would suggest. And furthermore, we are heading, as an authority, to be meeting our targets for housing delivery. But the very housing that we are going to have a superabundance of are flats. And we certainly don't need substandard flats. If this were a proper house on the site with some amenity space, then perhaps one could consider it. But I would not regard this as a suitable site and certainly not for the proposal that we have in front of us this evening, Chair. So for those reasons, I would propose rejection, citing policies H5 in respect of substandard accommodation, policy CC8 in terms of the stacking, and policy H10 and CC8 in respect of lack of amenity. So, Chair, I would propose rejecting it for those reasons.
Is that seconded? Right. Anybody else want to speak on this one? Councillor Hornby-Smith.
Yeah, I entirely agree with what councillor Page has said. I think the policy H5 is permissive. It doesn't discuss about inside the central area in its main policy. It doesn't discuss about substandard housing. What it does say in the supporting paragraphs, in 4.442, it says, "Even where it does not apply, the nationally prescribed space standard offers a useful point of reference and a good basis for design of new developments." And I would agree with councillor Page that this is not a good basis for design. And it also says elsewhere, CR2.1F, "Development should be designed with consideration of adjacent development sites." And this is clearly right in the midst of a whole load of high-rise buildings and would be quite a daunting and difficult place to live, I think. So for all the reasons that councillor Page has set out, but also what I've set out in terms of the policy, the supporting paragraphs don't support this and allow us flexibility to decide when and when not to apply, even if it is in the central area. And I think reducing it from 37 metres to 30 metres... 37 metres is small. It's very small. 30 metres is just completely unlivable in. I don't know, you know, all this thing about 20 minutes walk to the park. I mean, who's going to do that in the middle of a lunch hour? It's just not going to happen. But someone's going to have to live there or potentially commute and be very unhappy, very unhappy, living there for a long period of time. So I don't think it's appropriate to develop this site in that way.
Sir Rowland.
Yes, I'll just add really quickly, as a ward councillor and further on from councillor Page's point too, is it is undeniable that something should happen with this property. And I think I would encourage the owner slash developer of this to rethink and take these things on board and possibly consider what is a reasonable use for that site. But clearly, what has been presented was not well thought out and for the many reasons that both councillors, both of my colleagues have listed, does not need to go forward in this present form. But I'm not saying that something shouldn't happen. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't be able to reflect on that. So, thank you.
Councillor Carnell.
Thank you, Chairman. This, I find a little troubling, this proposal. The proposal certainly would be an improvement on the existing building. Councillor Page mentioned fly-tipping and graffiti. That may well be addressed by it being a residential property. Another issue that concerns me though is parking. It's a no-car development, but that doesn't guarantee no-car occupiers. So we have that. And I am minded to support councillor Page's proposal to refuse on the grounds he said, but there are other considerations. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Moore.
Just a brief comment. I support what's been said so far. I think an improvement on its current space is a bit of a low bar, given what it currently looks like. But that doesn't mean that we should settle for something that's still pretty rubbish. So I think I'm minded to refuse as well. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any... Oh, here's councillor Page.
Just two quick points. Firstly, through you, councillor Carnell, there's of course a multi-story car park just a few yards away, which actually serves parking for many of the local residents. And there are good discounts and season ticket rates available. See me afterwards. But on the future of the site, Chair, I'm not automatically assuming, and we aren't, that this should be residential. There is a demand for small business units and start-up units in the borough. This would be able to offer that sort of option. And it could be a well-designed unit that offered that, and it would certainly improve it. So, you know, this view that every site in the town centre has to be shoehorned for residential is not appropriate. This site isn't, and it could perform other functions. So it's not just residential we're saying this to whatever the developers are. It's Jim Townsend, I think, the Jim Townsend and Co. There are other existing uses that could be accommodated on that site. Thank you, Chair.
I don't know if Connie wanted to come back, but I'm obviously getting the indication that the motion to refuse the application is being supported by most members in the chamber. And councillor Page did express the appropriate policies that he feels it should be refused against. So in terms of the reasons for refusal, I think there would be four. I did wonder, as members were discussing it, whether the whole principle of the use of the site for residential use would be an issue. But if I just go through the four that you raised. So the first one was the lack of amenity space and the... Actually, I wonder if there's a combination there that... Maybe it's because of the constrained size of the site that to try to achieve two dwellings on the site means that the stacking arrangement and the amenity space are both compromised. Because I was wondering if it would actually be three, because it's all down to the size of the site, isn't it, in trying to get two on there? Which is why you've got the unit sizes being small, the stacking being convoluted, and there's no amenity space that can be provided. I think if members can agree, I think I will need to consider whether that would work better as a single reason for refusal, whether if we could pull it out. I'll have to think about how that would work in terms of logic, I suppose, in terms of reason for refusal. And indeed, should it be appealed, how we can defend each one on that. But I think they are, you've expressed them very clearly and you've got the right policies suggested there. So in terms of reason for refusal, they're sound. The other one we need to add to that, though, would be the Section 106, failure to enter into a Section 106 agreement, because that was a requirement on the recommendation. Connie, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
No, I think we've covered everything.
Okay. Can I see all those in favour of councillor Page's proposal to refuse this application? Thank you. That's unanimous. We do go on to Two Howard Street now on page 79. And this is Claire Ringwood is going to introduce this.
The application site is a two-story end-of-terrace property located in the Castle Hill and Oxford Road Conservation Area.
We can't hear you very well. I don't know whether... No.
Does that help?
That's better. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Sorry, Chair. The application site is a two-story end-of-terrace property located in the Castle Hill, Russell Street, Oxford Road Conservation Area. The property is not listed, but the neighbouring properties at 4 and 4A are Grade II listed buildings. The application is for the conversion of the property to a large house in multiple occupation for nine people, with the conversion of the existing garage to a cycle and garden store, two rear dormer windows, bin storage and associated internal and external works, as detailed in the main report. This application is a resubmission of a previous scheme that was refused at Planning Applications Committee on the 12th of January this year on the grounds of inappropriate stacking, where the communal ground-floor lounge, kitchen and dining room were over two bedrooms. The current proposal has sought to address the previous reason for refusal and the communal living and dining area has been relocated to the opposite side of the property so that bedrooms on the ground floor are above bedrooms in the basement. The only other amendment to this scheme from that previously submitted is that bin storage has been relocated to the side of the property closer to the bin collection point, rather than originally proposed at the rear of the site. Further clarification on how the threshold calculation has been interpreted has been provided in an update report. And a recent appeal decision allowed at 27 Newcastle Road, also for a large house in multiple occupation, has been referenced, as the inspector refers to the threshold calculation and policy interpretation. Subject to the conditions noted in the main report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you. And I would like to thank the officer for her presentation and bringing this forward. I'd also like to thank the developer for working with us when we refused an earlier application on the basis of stacking and then came back with a, actually, an improved plan that dealt with, excuse me, that dealt with and addressed those issues and actually achieved somewhat of an improved layout and improved open area for, an amenity area for the residents there. I think those are real positives. The situation regarding the fact of whether we, as ward councillors, had often felt that the property should have been flats as opposed to an HMO, because it's a site that I know that councillor Page and I both have felt was particularly well-sighted to be flats. The developer was adamant that they wanted an HMO and expressed to us with all sincerity about how this will be a remarkably and beautifully managed HMO, replete with, yes, well, they did. Yes, yes, you remember that. You know, replete with bins going out and bins being taken back in and all of those other wonderful things of an absolutely flawless residence. So we do hope that that is indeed going to be the case. They seem to be a young, eager crew and eager to prove to us that this is going to be a really fabulous HMO. What we also have here is the loss of a single-family house that was, for many years, a house from the 1950s, raised a family and all that. A single woman that contributed many, many good things to the local community. And now we have another HMO coming in. I appreciate the update report that sets out the fact that the counting that was in section, I believe, 6.8 is something that is justified insofar as HMO proliferation. And I certainly take that on board. The situation, though, is that, and I will say this because we have many residents in that area that say this is HMO-ville. There are many HMOs in the area. And they're worried and concerned about one more. So how we count and how we apply policy H8 is something that I think I would like to propose separate from, I believe, going forward and accepting the application this evening, that I would like to see come forward about a discussion on how we count our HMOs so that we can assure that H8 in the spirit of H8, which is that balance of a community, is actually appropriately addressed. I'll just point out that we seem to be, we have an older policy and an older consideration that I believe towns like Portsmouth and Southampton have taken another way of counting and everything. And I just think that it bears that in mind as we look forward and see the way that we can affect the local plan in the future, that kind of thing, or even possibly sooner than that. So I would request that as a report that comes back to this committee at a separate point. So, thank you. And I'm happy to go with that approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page.
Yeah, I'd second that, Chair. I think the application we have in front of us is an improvement. Indeed, one might quip that if the owners of the previous application had this site, the old greenhouse there would probably be three flats. But that's the building in the bottom right, which is a derelict greenhouse. But the owners here have proposed changes, which I think make this a much more acceptable application, even though, as councillor Rowland rightly says, we would have preferred to have seen three or four flats. The wider issue of HMO proliferation is something that we, I would suggest, as a committee, need to return to on the basis of further officer advice. The update report referred... The update report refers to the unfortunate appeal decision in respect of 27 Newcastle Road and the comments made by the inspector, and we obviously have to accept those comments. But in terms of the way in which we apply policies in other parts of the borough, I think we do need officers to reflect on that judgment and also on what other authorities have done to assess and determine applications and deal with HMO proliferation and whether there's a two-by-two, a one-by-one policy or three-by-one or whatever that we can look at, because there's clearly a role for well-managed HMOs as part of the housing stock. The problem is that our part of the borough seems to have all the poorly managed HMOs, and the well-managed ones are an exception. And so it's a policy that delivers flexibility in the housing supply, well-managed HMOs, whilst dealing with the problem of a proliferation of poorly managed HMOs. So, Chair, I would second that, and I know we've had a word with Julie already about this, and we would therefore ask that this is obviously not a condition, this is a separate minute that we are passing this evening, Chair, as agreed, but I would second councillor Rowland's proposal.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else, so we need to agree or disagree with the recommendation to grant this application, but also add a separate minute regarding the request for the committee to have a report back as soon as reasonably possible to look at the whole issue of HMOs again. I think it's something we need to keep under review anyway. So can I see all those in favour of the recommendation? Thank you, that's unanimous as well. Thank you all very much. Now, we've just gone to the last item now, which is Oxford Road Primary School on page 135, and Beatrice, I think, is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. This application relates to a grade 2 listed building at Oxford Primary School. The site lies within the Castle Street, Russell Street, Oxford Road Conservation Area. This application has been referred to committee as the proposed works for a council on application. Our listed building consent is sought for the proposed repairs and refurbishment of the pitched roof and replacement of bitumen felt covering to a number of small flat roofs. The proposal would utilise salvaged roof tiles and other roofing materials. In cases where this would not be possible, the use of a like-for-like replacement materials is proposed. However, to ensure that the proposed replacement materials match the existing ones, samples will be required to be submitted to and approved by the planning authority. The proposed works would be limited to the roof and no other part of the building would be affected by the proposal, and therefore it is considered that no harm to the internal and external of the listed building, there would be no harm to the internal and external of the listed building. Due to the nature of the proposed works, officers are recommending approval, subject to conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Rowland?
Thank you, as ward councillor with the fourth application in Abbey Ward this evening, a newly acquired area, I may add. I'm happy to agree this and will also just take the opportunity to say that this has been well addressed and I also appreciate the update information on this because of the fact that we are committed, council, to having a conservation urban design officer, which is not something that every council has, and it is a very valuable commodity and a position as an officer that can actually be able to ensure that we are getting, having listed buildings in situations like that taken care of properly. So I appreciate the materials coming back to the local planning authority for approval, and I'm happy to go with the recommendation. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else. Can we see all those in favour of that recommendation? Thank you, and that's... See you all in three weeks' time, we've got a quick turnaround this time.